Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining our virtual parent community town hall meeting. It is an absolute pleasure to be here with you this evening. I know that you could be anywhere else, but you've chosen to be here tonight because you are dedicated to this school system. So I just want to say thank you for doing so, and thank you for joining us. Thank you also for your advocacy. And for those of you whom I haven't had the pleasure yet to meet, I'm Verlita White, the proud new superintendent of Roanoke City Public Schools. And so it is again my honor and pleasure to be here with you tonight. And so what is tonight about? I know that as a parent, you've come here with questions. You have you have some questions, you have some information that you wanted us to know. That's why you sent in information ahead of time. We are looking at real time information and questions that are coming in as well. And so I just want to thank you for your involvement as well. I know that as a parent, we do share some common goals. My prayer for my children every time they walk out the door is that I want them to be happy, healthy, safe, and strong. And I know that as a parent, that's what we all want for our children. We want them to make good friends. We want them to make good choices. We want them to learn as much as they can. But we also want them to be happy, healthy, safe, and strong. And so tonight, we're going to talk about how we can do that together as a community. And so as a community today, we're coming together to do just that and to talk about a responsible way to meet that goal so that we can keep our children safe altogether. I've heard from so many of you as a school system, we have heard from you. And I just want to again, thank you for all of the information that you've provided in the surveys, the intent forms. Many of you came out to the walking tours as I went from neighborhood to neighborhood. Thank you for that, for spending some good time with us, but also to provide feedback. You have provided feedback in emails and letters and phone calls. And we've read through all of your feedback. And so we want you to know that we're here to be responsive and to be here to to really kind of address those things that are on your mind right now. Nothing is more important than our health and the health of our children and staff members. And so again, I just want to thank you for your commitment to the health and safety of everyone. So when it comes to your feedback and your advocacy, I want to applaud you. I've always said that as a parent, if we don't advocate for our children, then who will? So I just want to thank you for your advocacy. And as an advocate, I would just ask that we do a few things and we keep a few things in mind. That those things, those basic things that we tell our children, I would like for us to give each other kind of the benefit of the doubt and to know that everyone is here for the right reasons and that we're all, we all have a good heart. We all want the best for our children. We all want everyone to be safe. So as we're advocating, I would ask that we just remember that it's not about putting one group against another group or or blaming or doing anything like that. That's not who we are. And I know that for sure, because I am a newcomer into Roanoke. And one of the things that I know for sure, this is a kind-hearted community. And I know that because of the warm welcome that I've received from so many of you. So as we're moving forward, let's give our feedback. Let's ask the hard questions. But let's remember to be kind to each other and do so in a way that we can respect one another and we can work together and move forward productively. So I hope that that's fair for all of us and fair for us to say. So when it comes to our common thread and the common, those things that we know that we can agree on, again, looking through all of the feedback, looking at the surveys face to face and information from when we met in person, there are common threads that have run through the feedback. We all share the common goal of wanting to have kids ultimately back in school. That's important for all of us. We want to have kids with a regular school environment. And we all want our students and staff members to be safe. Those are the common threads that run through all of the feedback. Now, the question is, how do we do so responsibly? So that's tonight's purpose, the purpose of this town hall tonight. It's it's not to sell you on anything. This is just to provide you with the information that you need so that you can make the best choices for your families and for your loved ones. So tonight, we're going to review the process that we've had to date. We're also going to have an overview of our proposed plan. Keep in mind that the school board has not voted on a plan yet. So these are potential plans. And so we are going to present our, we'll give you an overview of the proposed plan to date. We'll also address your questions that you've sent in, and we'll take some of your questions that are in real time. Now, keep in mind, there are a lot of us on online tonight. So it would be nearly impossible for us to get to every question. But we are going to get to as many questions as we can, because this is your time. And this is the time for us to address your questions directly. And we're going to do our level best to provide answers with as much specificity as possible. As a parent, I don't want vague answers. I want specific answers. And I know that you want the same. Also, I'm going to go over some of the next steps so that you know the timeline. And but we're going to spend the majority of our time on the Q and A section, because that's really where the bulk of tonight's town hall meeting will be. So before we begin, I would be remiss if I didn't start with a few more thank yous. Again, thank you to you for your feedback. I also want to say thank you to our school board for their leadership. I also want to thank our task force and the subcommittees and all of the representation there for their guidance along the way. I also want to thank our teachers and staff members for their dedication and commitment to our children. And I'd like to also thank our executive staff members, many of whom you'll see in just a minute. But I also want to thank our kids and our students. Our kids have had to be flexible. I know for my youngest daughter, the last year she was a senior, she missed her prom, she missed her graduation, and yet she took it all in stride. And sometimes we we talk about everyone else in this, but we have to keep children at the center of our conversation. So if your children are watching, thank them for us, because I know that they miss their friends, and I know that they miss their teachers. And we're going to do everything that we can to try to make sure that we get them back safely. So just for introductions right now, I'd like to introduce some folks who are part of my executive staff team that will be helping us out with the Q and A portion of this town hall meeting tonight. So first, I'd like to introduce Dr. Julie Drury. Dr. Drury is the Executive Director of School Improvement. Also, Dr. Tim Hahn, who is the Executive Director for Student Support Services. I'd also like to introduce Joyce Hatcher, who's the Executive Director for Human Resources. Kathleen Jackson, who is our Chief Financial Officer. Greg Johnston, Executive Director for Pre-K 5 Instruction. Justin McLeod, Director of Marketing and Public Relations. Chris Perkins, Chief of Security. Haley Poland, Executive Director for Special Education and Reach. Britt Simmons, Coordinator of Technology Support. Tasha Steele, Executive Director for School Counseling and Equity. Michael Trussell, Director of Data and Analysis. And we pulled in a few principals also to help us with the logistics. So I'd also like to introduce R.T. Freeman, who's the Principal of Fleming High School, as well as, and I know that she couldn't be with us tonight, but I'd like to recognize Dr. Cindy Delft, who is the Principal of Fishwick Middle School. So we are all in in different places right now. And I know that sometimes when we do a town hall like this, people wonder, well, you're talking about having kids in classrooms. Why aren't you all together? If we were all together with our microphones on, then we would get a lot of feedback. So we are really kind of just separated so that we don't get that feedback from our microphone. So I just wanted to make sure that that's that's clear. We will be answering, again, many questions that were sent ahead of time. We want to thank you for that. And we'll be answering questions in real time. So if we hesitate a little bit, just give us a little wait time, because those questions are coming in as we speak. Also, you'll see me looking at my notes, just so that we don't forget any of our salient points. And we'll be jotting some information down as well. So let's go over the process that we've had to date. So when I arrived in Roanoke 23 days ago, we had survey results that were just coming in. That's when we were getting in the survey results. And those results suggested that 68% of the community wanted some level of face-to-face instruction for children. And about 30% of parents at that time wanted virtual, fully virtual instruction. And at that time, just about that time, or maybe even a week later, 78% of the staff, including 75% of teachers, said that they felt comfortable coming back to school. And most of the emails at that time, and I can say it was really when I first walked in the door, we were flooded with multiple emails. You know who you are. And that's okay, because we got your feedback. Who asked for five days a week for the continuity of instruction and said, we have to have five days a week of instruction. And we knew that in terms of logistics and resource allocation, and really for the health and safety of our students, when it comes to cleaning and those kinds of things, that five days would have been tough. But we were able to have some other things that we needed to make sure that we had as considerations as we were developing our plan. I do want to take you through, when we're talking about our process, there are 10 key points that have to be considered in whatever plan, for whatever plan we develop, that are crucial to the health and safety of students, but also their academic program. And many of you watched the last school board meeting, so I won't take you through all of those details. But I will recap what those 10 points are, so that if you did, if you missed it, at least we'll all have a similar baseline of understanding. So when it comes to those 10 considerations, number one, of course, is health and safety. We also have to take into consideration curriculum and curriculum readiness, instructional practices, and how instruction might look as we are going about the effectiveness of teaching and learning. Assessment, how much academic slide has happened as a result of the pandemic and students being away from school, we have to make that determination. Also, thinking about professional development needs for teachers, administrators, and staff members, human resources need to be considered, as well as communications, budget, policy. Keep in mind that the calendar, for instance, has been pushed back so that now students' start date is August 31. And teachers' start date is now August 18. Those are the kinds of things. And certainly, infrastructure has to be considered as well. Additionally, we also have to take into consideration the needs of Roanoke City Public Schools. And when I talk about the needs, I'm talking about academic performance levels, as well as the demographic makeup of the school system. We have to think about childcare needs of our parents. Many of you have written in to talk about childcare needs, access to technology, access to various types of connectivity for our learners as well. And then we also have to take into consideration guidelines from the Virginia Department of Education, from the CDC, the World Health Organization, the American Academy of Pediatrics, as well as the Virginia Department of Health. And when we look at all of that and we talk about and we think about equity, we also have to keep in mind that 57% of our learners, of our students, live in poverty. And so that is a key factor in any decision that we have to make as well. We also have to keep in mind that 16% of our student body are students with disabilities. And we have about 14% of our students who are English learners. So when it comes to a plan, we have to have a plan that is flexible enough, that meets the needs of all of our learners, and is also tailored to our school system. So this has to be a plan by Roanoke City for Roanoke City. So again, we're committed to equity, and that really is the basis of our proposed plan. And let me just say, as we we get into this, because I want to address one other concern that has come up, and it has come from to staff member to staff member, and that is, you know, do you understand how serious this is? Do you understand where we're coming from? And we do. And I think before it's all said and done, unfortunately, many of us would have been touched by this virus. And we'd want to make sure that we're going forward responsibly. Many of you know that I have been personally touched by this, and I don't want to rehash it over and over again. But it is serious. It is real. You know, I just lost my brother-in-law to COVID-19. And I only bring that up because I talk to my sister every day. And I see the impact that it has on her and on us. So if there's any doubt that we're taking it seriously, please don't. Because it's serious to me. It has touched my family, and I hope that it never touches yours. So just don't doubt that we are taking it seriously. When it comes to our plan, our plan follows all the guidelines that I had mentioned, and it also addresses community input, and it allows us to pivot as needed. So again, keep in mind that the survey that that went out, how people felt two weeks ago may not be how they feel today. Why? Because the news changes every day. The percentage of COVID cases change every day. So again, we have to make sure that we're flexible enough to be able to pivot as needed. Our plan calls for four days of instruction with one, four days of in-person instruction, and one day of virtual instruction, or 100% virtual academy, so that you will have choices, again, based on your unique circumstance, your choice, your family's preference, there are options for you. Now, why four days? Again, many of you have talked about, and we agree, that there has to be some continuity of instruction, so that students, again, have lost a lot of learning, we're assuming, up to this date. So we wanted to make sure that we had a plan that would ensure the continuity of learning. We also wanted to make sure that we had a plan that's flexible, that if we needed to downshift in any way, that we could do so. If we needed to go from four days to three days to two days, one, or to fully virtual, that we would be able to do so. It is much harder to get the logistics together for four days than it is to then scale up from one or two and to scale up to four. It's easier to go the other way if we need to do so. The virtual academy piece, I wanted to talk about that, because a lot of questions have come up about, well, how is the virtual academy different than what students received in the spring? That's a great question. So in the spring, we were in emergency mode. That was an emergency virtual plan, if you will. Well, this is not an emergency plan. And so there will be one platform, there will be one learning management system, there will be assignments, those assignments will be graded, and attendance will be graded. So again, it's will be rigorous and challenging, and we'll make sure that students have the benefit of engaging instruction, whether or not they're in person or they are in the virtual environment. So we'll quickly touch on, I'll quickly touch on some of the 10 points that I mentioned before, again, not to rehash the entire board meeting, but just so that we have a baseline of understanding. As far as the health and safety component, I mean, really, as a parent, I would want to know, and I would ask the question, how are you planning to keep my child safe? It's a very basic question. But I think it's a question that everyone wants to know. So there are various ways that we're looking at the health and safety piece. One, where, when developmentally and medically appropriate, we're looking at face coverings for our students and staff members. When we're talking about hand washing procedures, as children enter the building, as they're throughout the day, and before they even leave to come home. One thing that I know that we we do very well, and that is establish routines. So we want to make sure that there are new routines that are set forth about how do we eat in the classroom? How do we make sure that we're engaging in hand washing? Making sure that when appropriate, that we're wearing our face mask, how we're social distancing as well, or physically distancing, thinking about all of those screening procedures, taking temperatures, even before students and staff members enter the building, making sure that we're taking our time through many of those questions that we really have to answer, so that we can gauge how kids are feeling and how staff members are feeling as well. So those are some of the basic things that we will be sure to have in place, along with, of course, personal protective equipment, so that we can make sure that our environment is safe overall, along with the cleaning. And we'll get into some of that as we answer the questions tonight. I also would want to know how your, how any school system, as a parent, I would want to know, how are you accounting for my child's overall wellness, their emotional wellness? And we're going to address many of those questions tonight. But in terms of time for discussion, time for recess, time to get out and play, time to to talk with others, time to have support and counseling, those things are equally as important when it when it comes to providing an educational program that supports the whole child. Curriculum-wise, I would want to know, what will my child learn? The content, there is content that is being created for the first few weeks of school, so that we can kind of lighten the load there for our teachers, and that it will be automatically set and done for them. The virtual academy will include both primary and elective courses, and we'll make sure that students have the benefit of hands-on learning, project-based learning, flipped classrooms, so that they can be engaged in a highly engaging and effective learning environment, whether or not they're face-to-face, or if they're engaging in the virtual academy. The professional development piece, there are new procedures that we all have to learn. We cannot overlook the importance of professional development for all of us. There will be a new way to come into the building. As a parent, I would want to know, how will your teachers know what to do? How will the staff members know what to do? There will be new procedures that we will have to to put into place. That's one of the reasons why we wanted to push this, the calendar back a bit, so that our teachers and staff members would have time to learn what to do in the event of a COVID case. Where should children go? What do our school nurses need to do? What are some of the communication procedures, so that you stay informed? How, what am I going to do if my child has a friend in the classroom who also has tested positive for COVID? What happens then? We have all of those professional development procedures in place, because those are the critical new questions that we all have to answer before school starts. When it comes to infrastructure, I would want to also know, why did you stagger bell times? And I know many of you have asked that question. Keep in mind, everything takes longer. And if we're honest with ourselves, it takes longer even to go to the market these days. It takes longer, if for me, I'm wiping down, you know, all of my groceries. It just takes a little longer. It's going to take us longer at arrival times. It's going to take us longer because we're taking temperatures. We need to make sure that we're following mitigation strategies. We want to make sure we're following hand washing procedures. That's going to take a little longer. So we have to stagger the bell times, so that all the kids are not converging on the school all at once. And so a lot of questions have come up about, have you considered other options? Yes, we did. We have considered, and again, some components of those options may still be considered. When it comes to four days a week versus two days a week, for instance, we thought about exposure, making sure we're talking about the sharing of materials, exposure for our students and for our staff members as well, thinking about workload and teacher workload, also considering communication. We have to have a plan that is clear and simple for everyone to follow. So I could go on and on. I'm going to stop there. It looks like it's been about 25 minutes already that I've been talking. And again, I want the majority of this time to be about the questions and answer period that you have sent in. I want us to get directly to your questions. I took you through some of mine. And so I just want to make sure that we're getting to your questions. So let's see, let's get started. And I'll ask the team to to get ready to help me out here. And I'm going to, as they're handed to me, I'm going to just go through them. And I will try, as I read them, to try to group them as best I can, so that we have some continuity in our conversation tonight. So let's start with this one. Um, this question came in, will children and staff have to wear masks masks in class if the desks are more than six feet apart? How will this be enforced? Will students be sent home if they refuse to wear one? So I'm going to ask Mr. Perkins or Dr. Hahn to address that question.
Good evening. Thank you. Masks should be worn by all students who are medically and developmentally appropriate. If a student is in the classroom where the desks are less than six feet, then they will be required to wear a mask. When the students are in a classroom or outside and can maintain physical or social distancing, more than six feet, then they will be allowed to remove their face coverings. When we talk about non-compliant issues, of course, we hope we don't have any. But we will face that with with an educational process. The staff will talk with the student and find out why they're not wearing the mask. We'll talk to the parents, and we'll educate them. We'll work with our nurse, with our counselor, and with our administration. It would be a very progressive discipline, and hopefully, an educational process.
Thank you. When when it comes to the younger children, this is a question that has come in. And Ms. Poland, you may be able to answer this one. How will students, especially the younger ones, be encouraged to keep a mask on?
We've been working over the summer with some of our students in the extended school year program. We've had really great success with social stories and working with both parents and students to find a common ground to encourage our students, have them wear the mask a little bit of time at home, to really get them that in that comfortable feeling, in that comfortable place. Another other couple of things that we've that we've worked on is just taking mask breaks if they're within, or if they're outside of the six feet, to get those students used to that. Some of our students with disabilities need a face shield, and kind of we're working up to a face mask. Those are all things that we can start working on this summer. We really encourage our parents to get in contact with us and see if there's some other things that we can do prior to the school year starting. CDC has some great resources as well to encourage our students and to to get them used to wearing masks and to seeing adults in masks and being comfortable approaching an adult or speaking with an adult with a mask on.
Thank you. Here are a couple Here are a couple of questions that are hot off the presses. So, there's a question here about how AP classes will work, and we are able to offer AP courses. Dr. Drury, do you want to jump in there? We are able to offer AP courses, correct?
Yes, we, we will be, we will be offering AP courses, both online through the Virtual Academy and in-person, as long as we have enough students who need to, who want to take that particular course, if we combine our online and our in-person classes. So, just like any other year, we will have them as normal.
Thank you. This one says, would you, as superintendent, send your own children to school? Well, again, so, I think that every child is different, every child has a story. The bottom line is, yes, I am sending my child to school. Now, my kids are a little older, but the, as a parent, your worry isn't any less as they get older. Actually, as they get older, sometimes you have new worries as they get older. So, I just keep in mind that there are, certainly, every parent has to make that decision for themselves because our children are different. Their health needs are different, their social needs are different. And for me, I just want to answer this question directly, that's, that's the decision. It's been a, a conversation my husband and I have had for our girls, and yes, they are going back to school, but that was after careful consideration, just like you're having to have those, those talks as a family as well. And that's why we wanted to provide you with, with choices. Let me get to, to this question as well. And Mr. Perkins, I'll ask you to jump in here. Will parents be notified if someone in their school tests positive for COVID-19? What is the plan to manage an individual or, and/or outbreak case? Will a whole class need to be quarantined?
So, the answer is yes, we will communicate that we have a positive COVID-19 test. We have, we will work closely with our local health department, working on contact tracing. It will be incumbent upon us as a school division to make sure that we can provide rosters of all the contacts, all the staff members that have contacts. We will share that information with VDH, so we're as thorough as possible to realize the extent of what that contact tracing may, how it may impact us. So, it may impact a class, it may impact a hall, and remember, our elementary students are not transitioning as much as our middle and high school students may be. So, that contact tracing will be critical in how we handle it. So, we will communicate, we'll do all of those things, and we'll work closely with the Department of Health. And I'm going to toss it over to Dr. Han to make sure I didn't leave anything out.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Absolutely, we would work directly with the Virginia Department of Health, and that, that's why the physical and social distancing is so important, and also, communication that we have on, on a, a regular basis with the Virginia Department of Health.
Thank you. And, and a related question here is, if a classroom must close for two weeks due to a positive testing, will those students be given online instruction for those two weeks? And I guess I'm looking at Dr. Drury for that one.
The answer is yes, they would be able to go over to virtual learning as, as needed, not a problem, because all of our courses are going to be following the same curriculum and the same pacing guidelines, whether they're virtual or whether they're in-class, in-person.
Thank you. And then there are a couple of questions, one that came in ahead of time, and another one that just came in, but they're very much related. And it's, will RCPS consider a different hybrid alternative with two days of in-person instruction to allow for social distancing and safety? And this other one that came in said, what is your thought of two days in school and three days virtual? So those are pretty similar questions. So, of, of course, we're, we're looking at all of those various options. Keep in mind, if it's two days a week, there are a couple of things that we have to keep in mind. According to Virginia Department of Education, we have to account for students in grades pre-K to 2, our special education learners, as well as our English learners as well. So, in terms of making sure that they have as much in-person instruction as possible is what we've been asked to take a look at. But for students in all other grades and who are outside of those categories, we're looking at both. If we have a two-day, Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday option, for instance, if the average class size is about 28 students, you have about 14 students in, well, you have 14 students in the classroom. And at 70%, you might have 19 or even 20 students in the classroom. We have to just look at the health needs, we have to make sure we are accounting for movement, we have to look at exposure when it comes to kids switching classes, switching days, because now we're looking at whether or not that would be beneficial for students to be and teachers to have different groups of students that they're next to. So, again, all of that is being considered as we're looking at all of those various options. So, thank you for asking that question, good question. Let's see, this one. Mr. Freeman, I'll ask you this one. How will mask requirements and distancing be enforced at the high school?
Good evening. Mask requirements and distancing being enforced, just to let you know that we are practicing, and we've actually looked with the architect firm in regards to the distancing requirements, especially during transitions, I mentioned earlier with Mr. Perkins. But mask requirements, if students are six feet apart, they will be required, they would not be required to wear the mask. If they're short of distance, they will be required to wear the mask when developmentally and medically appropriate. So, we want to make sure we accommodate them, because we want to thank for the safety of not only just the students, but the safety of our staff.
Thank you for that. Now, Mr. Perkins, this one, can students still bring a bag lunch to school?
Yes, of course they can, but what we want to emphasize with our parents and guardians is, we do not want them to share that lunch. As you can imagine, and, and me, and I am a parent, and, and I would, I would talk to my daughter about this, you know, we don't want to share those lunches, but of course, we want you to be able to, to still pack your child's lunch or your student's lunch and send that with them.
Right, no sharing. And we need the parents' help with that, because we know, I mean, we did it, let's be clear, as, as youngsters, we did the same, but in this day and age, we can't allow it. So, let's make sure that we're telling our children, no sharing at this point in time. So, understanding that there are HIPAA issues, will RCPS get notified if one of its students' teachers staff has a positive COVID test? Or will you be dependent on the person to let you know? Mr. Perkins or Dr. Han?
So, I'll start and I'll toss to Dr. Han. We are conducting, for students in-person and staff that are coming into our buildings, we are conducting daily health screenings. And part of that daily health screening is a question that relates exactly to that question. Have you been in contact or you have contacted, anybody has a positive COVID screen? So, yes, we are answering that question. We hope that we are getting those answers, because we are conducting those health screens daily. Mr. Han, anything you'd like to add?
Yes, sir, I would just add that it, it really depends, because if the, the individual was not in the building or in school and was not planning on attending, VDH may not alert us. So, it really depends on the situation. However, we do have the screening that would hopefully catch any, any situation or any individual that would have symptoms.
Thank you. This question just came in, please reconsider the dismissal time for middle school students. So, I say, would you reconsider dismissal time for middle school students? And we may be able to do so, and I'll let Mr. Perkins take you through some of the transportation complexities there for, for the middle school bell time.
So, this is where I want to signify the importance of the intent form. The more information we have, the better we can improve our precision in our planning. So, I can't tell you enough how important it is that you let us know if you need transportation, because that will help us determine what we can transport and properly social distance on our buses. So, if you can imagine, if we're social distancing on a 77-passenger bus, the most that we can place on that bus is 26 students and properly social distance. So, that limits our ability through, or for our buses to, to do that. And so, letting us know ahead of time will help us determine that. It will also give us the ability to determine how often we can, how often we'll have to have different bails. And what I mean by that is this, if we have, let's say, we've, we've, we have been using our totals of 60%, and we have exactly 60% of our total student membership that decide they need transportation. In order to do that, and properly social distance for the number of buses we have, we have to spread those bail times out, meaning the start times. But, if we have greater help from our parents and guardians, all those intent forms, and they'll be bringing children to school, we may be able to, to squish those and maybe even get back to two bails. And that's, and when I say bails, I'm talking about your start times. If we can do that, we will. And, and look, we don't want to disrupt your lives any more than what we have to, but we, we are, we have to be conscious of our social distancing, we have to, you know, follow the guidelines to the best of our ability to, to, there is, I can't tell you there's no risk, but what I can tell you is, we'll do our best to mitigate the risks that exist. But that's why we have those bell times to help stagger those entries and, and candle the volume that may be present, but those intent forms are extremely important.
Thank you. Ms. Steele, I see that there are a couple of questions here that I think are pretty much related, I'll try to go through some of those together. The first one is, how are students in the RCPS Virtual Academy assessed for mental health?
That's a great question, and we know that many of our students have struggled with this throughout the pandemic. So, and let's be real, many of us adults have too. And students in Roanoke City schools who are learning in-person, as well as through the Virtual Academy, will be assigned a school counselor. And students and parents can work with the counselor via telephone, they will also have access to our online platform, which is HIPAA compliant, and parents may also request for their child to see the school counselor in person. Our counselors will work with students individually, in groups, and through whole-class lessons. And our students, in terms of reporting, our students can self-report their mental health concerns. We also will continue to receive referrals from teachers as well as parents. And, and also, please keep in mind that school counselors will continue to refer students to mental health agencies in the community as needed. And parents, please let us know if there are significant and ongoing issues where we can refer your child to, through the child find process.
So, you're saying, so this next question, I think, is related to that, and that says, if my child is in the Virtual Academy, what is the best way to reach the school counselor? And I think you just said, they can either call or email or...
Absolutely. So, the best way to reach the counselor or the school social worker will be to reach the, the school directly, through the phone or email. I do want to caution, if you're using email, please be careful about sending too much personal information via email. Sometimes, it's simply best over email to say something along the lines of, I need to speak with you about my child, and then leave your phone number, and the counselor or social worker will be in touch with you.
Thank you. Dr. Drury, this one just came in, and, or Mr. Johnston, you can maybe answer this as well. It says, this is about the Virtual Academy, so I'm just going to, along those lines. Can, this came in off the kind of hotline here. Can students communicate with one another if they're in the Virtual Academy? So, again, that kind of social interaction or behaving as a class, will they have that opportunity and how?
So, when, when looking at the, the Virtual Academy, when working with each other, Canvas does allow us to have an open dialogue box to where they can have an open-ended question and work with the teacher. There may be also an opportunity where teachers, when working on the Virtual Fridays, that they can bring all, their entire class into a Microsoft Teams event and work together, and that's something that we're going to have to. As we see the number of students taking part, now, everyone will take part of Virtual Fridays, but as they're working together, it's going to be based on a scheduling piece and really trying to get everyone together, because that was a big concern back in the spring, is that when children were doing the online instruction, they weren't necessarily available during the day, because they had to go to a daycare or to a family member's house and didn't have access. So, that is something that we're going to have to take into consideration as we plan and as we go into the beginning of the school year, and we will actually see when we start working with Canvas and Microsoft Teams more often, we will see how much we can and cannot do with the program.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Steele, I'm going to jump back to you really quickly, because this is, has come up as well. If my child transitions from in-person instruction to virtual instruction, can they keep the same counselor?
So, that is a, another great question, and we definitely understand that trust is a significant factor in any relationship. So, we will absolutely do our very best to try to keep students matched with the counselor they started the academic year with.
Thanks. And then one more here, and that is, so then, overall, just how are students assessed for mental health issues?
So, I think that's a repeat question, but I can...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, that's okay, that's okay. So, our students will be assessed using phone services with counselors, as well as our virtual platform, which is HIPAA compliant. And parents may also request for students to see their counselor in person. We will make sure counselor, sorry, students have time with their counselor individually, as well as in groups if needed, and we will also be offering whole group lessons. And if students have concerns, personal concerns about mental health, they can continue to self-report, and we will also continue to receive those referrals from parents. We will take referrals from teachers. Oftentimes, you know, if teachers are working with kids, even in a virtual setting, they can report that they have a feeling that something may be going on with a student, and that happens, and so we will work with the student in that case. Also, we will continue, as school counselors, to refer our students to mental health agencies in the community as needed. And just one last reminder, if there's something significant that you may see in your child, please let us know, so we can refer your child to the child find process.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Perkins, in schools where six feet of social distancing is not possible at 70%, will you bus kids to other larger schools?
So, the answer is yes, we will move children to other schools, but there's many variables that we want to look at. Again, that intent form's important, so I want, I'm going to keep emphasizing that. We, we have to look at, one, the capacity of the current school, and how many children intend to attend in-person instruction at that school. We're working with a team of architects to lay out our social distancing, we're even talking about traffic flow there, to make sure that school has the capacity. If that school does not have the capacity, we're going to work with an adjoining school that may have the capacity, and then we're, we're doing the same thing at those schools. If the, based on the buses, and if they need transportation, so that's where that transportation question's important, and we have the room on the buses considering social distancing, and the address of that student, we'll find the school that will be most appropriate and have the capacity. Of course, we'll have to work with the administrators of that school, we want to make sure that, that, that that school can provide all of the same, and it, it depends on whether it's elementary, middle, or high, on what offerings may be there, considering what the student academically is doing. So, we'll work through all of those variables, and we'll do our very best to make that happen. And we're not going to put our students in a position where we're overcrowded, not during this pandemic. So, we're going to consider all of that, but the short answer is, yes, we will work to move students to where they receive education in person, if that's their desire.
Thank you. And another question about our partnerships here, has the Allegheny Roanoke Department of Health Services been involved in this planning? I'm just going to throw that to you.
Yes, and the answer is yes, we've had regular contact through our nurses, through Dr. Han's office, Student Services, through your office, the superintendent, and, and I'll give you an example of how that regular contact has helped us in our planning. One of the things in our discussion with the superintendent and a local health department expert was... things in our discussion with the superintendent and a local health department expert was the identification that hand washing was lacking in a lot of plans that had been submitted. From that discussion with our local health department, we went out and we were actually going to place hand washing stations, because hand washing is so much better, according to the experts, than hand sanitizing. While we have hand sanitizing everywhere, we're actually now adding that extra, based on those conversations with the health department, extra hand washing stations in our schools. In fact, we're looking at acquiring 60 of those to place around our schools. Our elementary schools are better off in that they have a lot of hand washing stations in the classrooms themselves. Our middle schools and high schools, while we have bathrooms, we still have our restrooms, we still have to social distance in those. So that's where those hand washing stations are going to be very valuable to us. And that's an example of that regular contact we've had with our local health department.
Thank you. Dr. Drury, this one is related to virtual instruction. So for virtual, it says, can students have live instruction?
Well, the Virtual Academy is going to be primarily asynchronous, which means anytime instruction. We learned a lot of lessons from the spring, in that we had families that didn't have the bandwidth available to use the video communications tools. They had spotty internet, crashing hard drives, dying batteries. We had students who were in daycare, or older siblings who were taking care of their younger siblings at the same time. And so that same time synchronous instruction just is not feasible for most of our families. So at this time, we are going to be using asynchronous instruction primarily. We will have times that teachers may meet with smaller groups or individuals during office hours using a program called Microsoft Teams, which is a lot like Zoom.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Johnston, can you just take us through and elaborate on virtual learning for, this is hot off the presses, for early grades? And what that might look like for early learners?
Okay, so one thing that we want to make sure that parents do understand is that for online learning, especially with the early learners, it will be age-appropriate. So we want to make sure to always take that in consideration. We'll be using the Canvas platform, as mentioned, as I mentioned earlier, and that we will be working with different resources that we have now, that we didn't have in the springtime, to where we can actually do small group instruction, especially with reading. We do have the capability going into the school year where a child can read into his computer, laptop, technology device that they may have. The teacher can actually, if the screen is shared with them, can actually watch them read it and give them feedback. So we do have more capabilities than we had in the spring, most definitely when we're dealing with an emergency situation. One thing that we do want parents to understand is that our instruction will be consistent whether you're in-person or virtual, to where we're going to be planning together. Staff members will plan together and follow the same curriculum throughout the school year. So at any time we would have to pivot from in-person to virtual, they will not miss a beat. We will be right on pace with the people that are in virtual or in-person, and that's very important to us. We're also making sure that our staff members are working very well together and sharing resources that, especially in the springtime, we have many teachers that did an excellent job with virtual pieces. And we have them on teams right now, helping us with our planning. So I think that it's going to be, it's going to be a lot better than what we dealt with in that emergency situation. It's going to be more consistent. But I also want to make parents aware, we will have a structure and an understanding and outline for them to see if they choose to do virtual. In-person's easy, we can send that home on a daily basis. But also the steps about how to access the technology, and we want to be consistent. We're doing that across all 17 of our elementary schools.
Thank you. Ms. Paulin, this one just came in for us. If a parent chooses to have their children virtually, how will special needs such as speech be handled?
We will make those decisions individually as IP teams. We also have other related services that we'll need to discuss as teams. As a team, speech, occupational therapy, physical therapy, or other related services will need, will need to develop and decide what's appropriate for the student, based on their disability and their needs, along with what service is needed and the mode of the service.
Thank you. Mr. Perkins, there are a couple of questions here that are related that I want to kind of give you back to back. The first one is, will students be allowed to bring a personal bottle of hand sanitizer?
The answer is yes, we will allow that.
And will children be able to use their own face mask or shield, or will they be required to use one that RCPS provides?
They will be allowed to use their own mask or covering. What I want parents to understand is that if it is medically and developmentally appropriate, the mask should fit tightly, and that's the best situation. And that's as recommended. So we would want them to consider that if they bring their own mask. We would also want them to understand, and I'm going to ask Dr. Han to jump in here, we want those masks to be appropriate and follow our student handbook. Dr. Han, anything else to add about that?
No, sir. I don't believe I can add much to that, other than following the student code of conduct and being appropriate. And we understand that there's a lot of masks out on the market today. And we don't want to get into a discipline situation. And so just make sure, as the parents are out there and listening, that the masks are appropriate. If you have any questions, feel free to give us a call or call your administrator.
We do encourage our students to, or their parents to mark masks if they are sending in an individualized mask. We also really encourage if, the summer, we have been providing Ziploc bags to keep the masks in, like while the student is eating, or if it's off of them. So we really encourage also to mark those bags. We will, we can provide if we need those different items as well. But we really encourage you to mark your mask clearly for your student.
Thank you. There's also a question here about the HVAC system. How is the virus being prevented from spreading through the HVAC systems throughout the school buildings? Mr. Perkins, you want to handle that one?
So our HVAC systems are being evaluated for the use of MERV-13 filters. MERV stands for the Minimum Efficiency Reporting Value. And I am not a MERV expert, I promise. But our HVAC experts are evaluating our systems. If MERV-13 filters are applicable to those systems, we will place them there. If we have systems that will not accommodate MERV-13 filters, then we will have an alternative but comparable plan for those systems. MERV-13 is the filter that is recommended by the CDC. And so we want to make sure we have all of those in place for our HVAC system, because the proper airflow, I mean, we're even looking at how much outside airflow that we're bringing in to our facilities. And our team is working on maximizing that airflow, but also maintaining a quality learning environment based on the conditions in the classrooms in the school.
Thank you for that. There are quite a few questions coming in right now about the Virtual Academy. Pretty much just asking, well, what does it look like? And just so that you'll know, and I'll mention this again at the end, we are going to post a video of sorts, so that, well, a video, so that you can see the new kind of learning management system and see what it looks like. But I'm going to ask Dr. Drury and Mr. Johnston if they can kind of weigh in, just to give a picture of, if a child is in the Virtual Academy, what might they experience?
Sure. Our students are going to be all on a learning management system called Canvas. And all of their courses that they would normally be in, in their regular school, will be taught on Canvas. And they will have podcasts, they will have instructional videos, text-based lecture notes, self-guided interactive learning modules. They may go to self-directed activities from other websites, and just a variety of different things to make their learning interactive. They may be given assignments where they have to go outside, gather a bunch of leaves and twigs, and put them together, and create some sort of diorama. Or they may have to do some other projects where they interact with other students virtually. There's a lot of different things that they can do within that Canvas environment that will help them learn at the same pace and learn the same curriculum that we are learning in person. They will also have times when they can meet with their teacher, or teachers, during their office hours. They can email them or call or visit with them using Microsoft Teams. Like I said, that's a program that's a lot like Zoom, where they can have small group tutorials, or they could have one-on-one sessions, in case anything's going along different, you know, they're having difficulties on an assignment or an assessment. They will have the same assignments, or the same assessments, our snapshots and our benchmarks that the in-person students do. They will see a very similar learning experience, it's just that it will be in the virtual realm versus in-person. The same rigor. It will be differentiated according to level. We'll still have honors classes. We'll still have our Rotek program for our high school students. We will still have the arts classes. We'll still have band strings. Everything will just be differentiated according to the virtual environment.
Thank you for that. Again, if I'm a student and I'm participating online, I'm still participating virtually, I'm in my courses, I'm going to do my assessments online, just like Dr. Drury said. I'm going to have projects that I'm working on, where to test base with my teacher. I'm sometimes going to have to watch something and then respond to it. Again, lots of rich content that will be on, in the virtual environment as well. So again, not emergency virtual, but planned, thoughtful, deliberate, meaningful virtual instruction. I think that's important for us to see. So this question just came in about masks and whether or not students have to wear their masks if they're six feet apart. And so we're saying, no. Again, keep in mind, there will be times during the day when kids will need to take their masks off, just like for us. We, as adults, we know that we need to have some time, some time without our masks on. It's hard for six and a half hours to keep your mask on. So we are encouraging outdoor play. We're encouraging times when kids are six feet apart. If they're six feet apart, according to health and safety guidelines, they don't necessarily need on a mask. But if they are three feet apart, if they're less than six feet apart, then they should have a face covering, as long as it's developmentally and medically appropriate for them to do so. So we just want to be clear about that, that there are going to be times when they eat, when they play outside, when they have that structured time outside, that they will be able to remove their masks and be kind of free from it for a while. And then in terms of enforcing mask wearing, a lot of questions are coming in about that as well. Again, this is, just as Dr. Han said, we don't want to have to use progressive discipline. And I'm not talking about the other exceptional cases when a child has a medical issue and has an issue with wearing a mask. With that aside, I'm talking about the refusal to wear a mask, then we will need to get parents involved. And we will need to make sure that we are kind of telling the line on this, because our students are potentially at risk, our staff members are potentially at risk. So this time is critical. And I really hope that our parents will back us up on that. And I know that I will back up our teachers and our administrators on that point as well, because this is serious business, as we all know. So here's another infrastructure question. Is the Clorox Total 360 being used per the video being done during the day while students are at school? So Mr. Perkins, you want to take that one?
Sure. The primary use of the Clorox 360 tool is for the deep sanitizing, deep cleaning that we'll be doing when students are not in school. But there may be an issue regarding the illness, where we want to remove the students from a classroom, and we need to do that sanitation and disinfecting right away. The good thing about this system is that classroom is, can be occupied within about 10 minutes of using the system. But we would move the students out if there's any concerns of illness, as we mentioned before. We would take all the necessary precautions, and we would use that. But we're not going to walk through the school with students using this machine. It's not meant for that. But it is meant to sanitize and disinfect. And it is just a wonderful piece of equipment that we're blessed to have.
And just in case, those who are unaware about the video that we're referencing, we did a video, and it's posted online, so that you can see some of our cleaning procedures and how we're cleaning our buildings. And so after this, if you get a chance, take a look at that, because I think that'll shed some light on how we're cleaning our schools. So this one is about meals, and this has just come in. If students choose virtual, can they still get lunch through the school? How will meals be distributed?
So I'll take that. We're developing a form using our partner Sodexo, and our Director of Food Services, Ellen Craddock. We'll have that form available for our students. We'll have Grab and Goes available. We'll make it easy as possible. We'll provide multiple meals. We'll probably do that three times a week, sort of like we did. As an example, if you remember how we did this when we closed schools in the spring. We set up those sites. We will have more of those sites. We'll work through that. We'll make sure that those forms are available, so students can let us know that they want their meals. And we will address that and take care of our virtual students.
Thank you. And also, that's for Virtual Fridays as well, correct?
That is correct.
Yep. And this question is, will parents be allowed to eat lunch with their children at school? I'm going to say that we've tried to limit the numbers of adults and children in any given classroom. Certainly, if there is a dire need, then that would have to be taken on a case-by-case basis. But I would say, unless there's some extenuating circumstance, I think we want to try to limit the number of people in any given classroom, if possible. If the pandemic is declared over, and schools are fully opened, will the, will we return to on-campus, will the return to on-campus education be mandatory? So, Dr. Han, you want to help me out with that one?
I'm going to allow Dr. Drury to speak.
I think we will probably still have a virtual presence. This, I think, this whole time that we're having here is giving us a unique opportunity in education to reimage or reimagine what education will look like in the future. And so I believe that we may have a virtual presence from here on out. And this gives us that opportunity to build that relationship with people in a virtual world. So I do believe that we will have some who want to stay going virtual, and hopefully, most will want to get back on campus, though.
Yeah, right. So, you know, my mother, God rest her soul, used to say that in everything, there's a lesson and a blessing. And so you have to decide, you know, where the, what the lessons are and what the blessings are. And so hopefully, we can find the lessons and the blessings in this, and see schooling maybe in other ways, in non-traditional ways, and look at how we're schooling, have schools without walls, which is what we're creating now. So just as Dr. Drury said, we have an opportunity here to look at school differently. And so we can learn from this opportunity, and hopefully, we'll progress accordingly. So when it comes to instruction, let's see. And let's, let me ask you, Mr. Johnston, this one. At the elementary level, will PE, art, and music still take place? If so, where?
Yes, we will have PE, art, and music. Art and music during the first nine weeks is going to start out in the classroom, to make sure that we're able to maintain the social distancing and minimize the movement. PE will take place within the gym and outside, based on weather conditions, too. But yes, all three of those, students will participate in those. And when you're looking at the And when you're looking at the virtual aspect for students, there will be videos and online pieces for them to use within those three, three areas. They will just be modified for the virtual venue.
Thank you. And Dr. Drury, if a student starts physically attending but determines it's not a good fit and changes to virtual, how will that transition happen?
Well, the parent will be, will, will talk to the administrator and let them know that that is the case, that it is not a good fit. And then the administrator will see that the transition is made as smoothly as possible from the student's schedule for in-person to a new schedule for, for virtual, which would have the same classes. There may be different teachers, just based on who we have teaching virtually versus who we have teaching in class. They, some of them may be the same. It just, it's going to vary by, vary student by student.
Thank you. Mr. Perkins, this one just came in. So when will we announce which elementary schools start at seven and which ones start at eight?
So again, that intent form is very important because then what we have to do, we have to consider our regional programs. For instance, at Virginia Heights, we've got to consider our STEAM program at Fishburne. We've got to consider our Plato programs at Fairview and Highland. We'll take all of that information and as soon as we have the intent, we know what the, or the transportation needs are based on that transportation question. And then we will announce those times. Again, I want to emphasize, we may be able to go back to our normal times depending on the need and the intent form. So doing those intent forms is very important and that way we can get that information out as soon as possible. I don't want to mess with the times, I really don't. But what we have to do as a district in order to social distance on those buses is get this information from you. So parents and guardians, I'm really imploring you to help out with that intent form and answering that transportation question.
Thank you. Another question that's just come in. How do you expect younger children to answer the health screening question? So again, in, in my mind, and Dr. Hahn, you can jump in here. But you know, again, what we've been looking at is information and questions in kid-friendly language. You know, that's kind of the smiley faces, thumbs up, those kind of posters that kids can kind of even point to. How do you feel today? Are you coughing today? That's, that has kind of cartoons beside them and where they can express how they're feeling, similar to when you go to the hospital. And they have many of those choices for students to point to as well. And Dr. Hahn, you can certainly kind of fill in there where I've missed anything.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. We do have our staff that know the students and have worked with the students that are going to be asking the questions and doing the screening. And we have the same six questions that we're going to be asking on a routine basis. And we're going to, you know, we're going to work through it on an age-appropriate level as well.
So, but this is where I, I need you parents also, before your children get on the bus or on their way to school, I need you to help us ask some of these questions too. About, you know, if your child is coughing, if your child has a fever, if your child doesn't feel well, you know, this is not the time to kind of push through. This is the time to have your child stay home if he or she isn't feeling well. So this is where we need you. This is a partnership. And certainly if they're experiencing symptoms during school or if they're during the day and they're not feeling well, we will certainly ask them those questions in, in developmentally appropriate terms. But before they get to school, again, it's about establishing a new routine. You grab your, you know, in the morning, get breakfast, get the cereal and, you know, a bagel or whatever. You grab your mask, ask you some questions, how do you feel? And you know, when, when your child says, I don't feel well, then we really need everyone to take that question and that, that information seriously so that we're not putting anyone in harm's way. You say that, this question says, you say the parents will be notified of positive COVID cases. And how is that going to happen? Is that going to be a letter? Is it going to be a phone call? So, and anyone can jump in here. But you know, initially, and I'll start with this, we just want, as a parent, I just need to know. You can call me or send me a letter. It depends on what time of the day. As a principal, I know that sometimes it depends on the time of day that we find out some things. If we have time to get a letter out and most of the time we will follow up in a letter. But again, sometimes it's through a robo-call. But as a parent, I just want to know. So anyone else want to jump in there? Okay.
And it, it depends on the level and the, the numbers, whether it's one student, a class, a whole school. It, it really depends on whether we're going to send a letter or a robo-call or a robo. So it is a little bit dependent on the situation.
Right. So we know that you want to know and we're not trying to hold any information from you. Now, keep in mind with all of the FERPA and HIPAA laws and regulations, we are not trying to violate any child's right to privacy. So certainly we can't give names. But we know what you want to know as a parent. As a parent, we want to know, I want to know, if my child is in the classroom with someone who has tested positive, I would want to know that. So I, so we want what you want and we want to make sure that you have access to that kind of information. We just can't release the child's name. And I hope that you understand that in terms of all the laws that exist. So in terms of the virtual academy, it says here, who is actually teaching these classes? So Dr. Drury?
Sure, thank you. Our regular teachers are going to be teaching the virtual academy. So they will, hopefully we'll have students from your child's, or teachers from your child's school that are teaching your students. But depending on the numbers of teachers who are teaching in the virtual academy from each school and the number of students that we have who are virtual from each school, we may have teams of teachers from different schools teaching in the virtual academy. But they will be our regular teachers who are all, are highly qualified and talented teachers.
If I could add to that, we will have special education teachers as well as, on the other end of the continuum, gifted teachers collaborating and providing that differentiated instruction even in that virtual academy. So it's, it's really important that we focus on, on every student's individual needs and be able to provide that even in the virtual setting.
Thank you for that. And is Mr. Simmons nearby? Need him. This question is about technology. So what is the game plan for those students who do not have internet access?
Running City Schools is working with Cox Communication. Cox has a program right now called Cox Connect to Compete. It's a discounted home internet and it's free for the first two months and then they count it rate after that. We're encouraging all parents to reach out to Cox and see if they can enroll in this program. If for some reason you aren't able to enroll, I'm sure that there's going to be a few people, reach out to the Department of Technology. Our phone number is 540-853-6070.
Okay. So then you really answered this other question here. Will the school provide computers? That's, that's another question that's coming here. So yes.
Yes, we will be providing computers as well based on the numbers from the survey and the intent forms. And these, again, it's very important that we get this information back. Right now it looks like we can provide a computer for every child who needs one.
Thank you. And Ms. Pollan, back to you. This, these questions have come in about IEPs. Will IEPs need revisions to include virtual learning? How will IEPs and 504s work for students in virtual academy?
Yes. So we will be amending IEPs prior to the beginning of the school year based on individual circumstances and the individual desires of the parent. So we will be coming together. We'll reach out to our parents and make sure that we are all on the same page. We do need that parental consent before we will be able to implement any changes to an IEP. So that, the stay put IEP from prior to March 12th is still, would still be in place unless we have that parental consent. That's very important that we want to work together as a team. For the Section 504 plans or for IEPs in the virtual environment or how they would be able to be implemented, we need to look at what accommodations are appropriate based on the student's setting and where they will be receiving their instruction. So that goes back to, for an IEP, present levels of performance, goals and services. And then for Section 504 plans, truly looking at what accommodations are appropriate based on the choice of the family and the needs of the student. So it's, it's very, very individualized and we want our parents to be in a team with us to develop those plans.
Thank you. There are some questions that are coming in about the intent forms and whether or not the intent forms are binding. So keep in mind that you can fill out another form. So if you've already filled out a form and I think what's, this question is getting to, there are some who have already filled out an intent form and now that they're hearing this kind of information, maybe they've changed their mind. You can do that up until the 28th. And then we really would like you to kind of stick with your choice so that we know exactly how many students we have in, in each option. Now keep in mind that students who are face-to-face and face-to-face instruction, they can, we can always kind of have students go virtual if we need to. Let's say for instance, we have a, a positive case in a classroom and we have to shut down a classroom, then that class goes virtual or the school may have to go virtual. That we can do. What's more difficult to do and what we can't do is for those who have decided on the virtual academy, once we get into a few weeks of school, then try to decide to go to face, from virtual to face-to-face, that's more difficult and more challenging because that's why we need the numbers and we need the intent form to know how, so that we can maintain that physical distance and follow the CDC guidelines on the physical distance. And if we have too many kids in class, then that's going to jeopardize that kind of social distancing. So keep in mind that we're going to regroup and reassess so that at the end of, of a quarter, we can see exactly where we are and if we need to make any adjustments, that will be a time when you can make an adjustment as a parent. But for, especially for that quarter, we would like for you to think, think about it. That's why we're making ourselves available to you. Again, we're not trying to sell you on anything, but we just know that you need information so that you can make a sound decision for your family. So just keep in mind, we'd like for you to really think through that decision. This also says, for the virtual academy, can students have live instruction? Again, we want to make sure that our teachers are not being pushed and pulled and, and all over the place. We want to make sure that if students have the benefit of face-to-face instruction, that a teacher is able to devote his or her time to the students who are right there. And then we've also have a virtual academy taught by high-quality, highly-qualified teachers who are in that option as well. So that's why that instruction has to be, virtual instruction has to be asynchronous so that we can make sure that all students have the benefit of high-quality instruction and we're not pulling our teachers in all different directions. Let's see, the next one has to do, hold on, I'm going back to this question here. Mr. Perkins, this talks about middle school students and sports. At the middle school level, can sport practices be held before school?
So currently VHSL has not made a decision. They had three options. That vote is not expected until next week. So we are waiting for that vote and we're waiting on the decision. And then we will meet as a team and we will discuss middle school sports and how we will handle that. And we have to consider our start and end times for middle school and how those all flesh out. So we don't have an answer at this point, but we're waiting on one and we hope to have one next week.
And while, while you're on screen, there are still quite a few questions coming in about the ventilation system. Can you just go over that again about our filters and our HVAC system?
Yes. So we're evaluating our HVAC syst, HVAC systems for use of the MERV 13 filters. MERV stands for the Minimum Efficiency Reporting Value. CDC is recommending we use a minimum of a MERV 13. So where, so systems that can handle a MERV 13, we will place those filters in our systems. An alternate but comparable plan will be for those systems that a MERV 13 will not fit. So we'll make sure we address that as well. The other thing we're trying to do is we want fresh airflow into the schools. And so we're working with our systems so that we can maximize the fresh airflow and, and also keep a comfortable learning environment as we go, as we look at our systems. So we're, we're doing a lot of work with our HVAC systems. We want to make sure that we get that fresh air. We want to make sure we have the proper filtration in those.
Thank you. Now we're, we're getting quite a few questions like rolling in fast and furiously, I think because our, our time is winding down. But let me just say this as well. Again, we know that we have quite a few people on and we know that everybody has questions. And we're going to do our level best here to address, as you can see, to address as many of those details and as many of those questions as we can. Keep in mind, if your question wasn't answered, we do have a format for that. And we do have the email in this town hall, is it townhall@rcps.info? You can send your question there if it wasn't answered today and then we'll add that to the FAQ document. But there's a question here, will there be recess? Yes. And can students use the playgrounds? We want to make sure that every time a child uses a playground, remember that when children are on the playground, they're touching that playground. And we have beautiful playgrounds. We have beautiful new playgrounds. And so we hope to get to the day where our children are using the playground equipment. But for now, we want them to have structured, organized free play where they can appropriately socially distance and still get the physical exercise and then one day get right back on that playground equipment. Someone asked, what do you mean about flipped classroom? I mentioned flipped classrooms. This is where students have work ahead of time, where they get to read material, they get to engage in material and process the information. And then the teacher will then engage them in question and answer after they've had an opportunity to. And so instead of having instruction and then the material, you have the material and then the instruction. So it's called kind of a flipped classroom. Mr. Trussell, do you want to weigh in on SOLs? There's a question here about are SOLs canceled?
So we're still, we're still waiting on guidance from the Virginia Department of Education. At this time, they, they understand the importance that getting that kids back in the routine, getting kids back to instruction and the socio, social and emotional needs of, of our students are of the utmost importance as opposed to testing. With that being said, we do have a few mandated tests that will need to be administered and those are the PALS in the elementary and the VKRP and our WEADA Access for Learners. But at this time, they're still flushing out the details of, for the task force with regards to our accreditation, what does testing look like? Is testing even possible?
Thank you. Mr. Perkins, a couple of questions are coming in about how classrooms will be sanitized. Will they be sanitized between classes? And then along those lines, there are questions about contact trace protocols. So can you just touch on that really quickly?
So yes, each classroom will have clean solutions that are CDC and EPA recommended for disinfecting reference to COVID. Those will be in each classroom. We will do restroom cleanings. We will do nightly cleanings. We will do deep cleaning, sanitizing, disinfecting, as, absolutely as much as possible and we will have routines for that. And could you repeat the last part of that question? I can't bring it up on my screen.
This one is the contact trace. This one says, do you have a contact trace protocol in place which includes family members?
So VDH will do the contact tracing for us. What we will do is provide the necessary information for them to conduct a good contact trace. For instance, rosters for rooms, children on buses, you know, the contacts through the day with staff. Like if we have an art teacher that goes- Like if we have an art teacher that goes to a classroom in elementary school, how many classrooms did that teacher go to and how will we do we have that information? VDH will then do that and we have to be good partners in providing that information.
Thank you. So again, I know that we couldn't get to all of their questions here, but keep in mind that we are I hope that you can see that we are available to you, that we are reaching out in various ways through our frequently asked questions documents, through the videos that we're posting at the end of this, for instance. We will have a Canvas or Learning Management video that will be live on our Facebook page starting pretty much now. And and we will be updating the FAQs as well. So just re just visit the reopening schools webpage and on on our website and you'll be able to find a lot of that information. I just want to take us through, I know that it's 8 o'clock and and you've been hanging in there with us and we appreciate that. We appreciate all of your questions and your engagement. Thank you for supporting us and and we are we want to be available to you as well in in every way that we can. So let me just take you through the next steps really quickly so that you're fully aware. We're going to gather the data from the intent forms. You've heard many times here tonight the importance of those intent forms so that we know exactly how many students we will have for the virtual academy and how many students we can propose that will be in person. Also, we are going to gather our teacher requests as well because we know that our teachers have some extenuating circumstances sometimes and they have some things that they want us to know. So we're hearing from our teachers while we're also hearing from our parents. We're also going to consider COVID cases. And we're monitoring the information daily, looking at the uptick in cases. Or if we're on a decline, we'll know that as well. But right now, we know that some of the cases are increasing. And we just want to be honest and upfront about that, but we have to know. So we'll be monitoring that. We'll also be taking our guidance, state and local guidance from our educational officials. So we'll keep you updated as far as that's concerned. If anything changes in terms of our phases, when it comes to the phase that our state is in, we'll need to just act accordingly. Also, we'll take into consideration academic needs and resource allocations as well. Once we have all of that information back and then once we had the updated information, we will then take that to the task force. That's why we have a task force. There are representatives from stakeholders from all over the city. So we want to make sure that the task force has the information. We'll talk to our principals, who are the key leaders in our buildings and they are phenomenal leaders from what I know so far. And I know that they work hard. So we want to make sure that we're involving our principals as well. And then we'll take our final proposal, our final proposal, our final recommendation to the school board, which at that point in time, we will be asking our school board to consider the proposal and then they will be taking a vote. We also then need to submit our plan to the Virginia Department of Education. And then we start school. So we are, I know that that sounds like a lot to do in a little time and it is, but we will do so thoughtfully and deliberately. Keep in mind, take a look at the videos when you can. And we really do hope that this was helpful to you and helped to answer some of your questions. Let's be sure to take care of ourselves, take care of yourself. Let's take care of our children in this process as well. Let's make sure that we are honoring them in this process and keeping children at the center of every discussion. If we do that, then we can't go wrong. So I appreciate you. I know the team appreciates you. I appreciate our team as well. So thank you for joining us tonight and have a wonderful night.